Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our regular city council meeting. Let me please remind you that this is a regular city council meeting, so please refrain from any conversations. And also use of cell phones, please at this time put your cell phones away, except as authorized by state law, Texas government code, section 551 dot oh two three. I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledges. Okay, we have a quorum. We have two council members asked this evening. Sarah Tandy for family emergency and Judy Stokes for personal illness. City secretary, proof of notice.
Thank you, Mayor. The notice of this meeting was posted by 2:00 PM on December 2nd.
Okay, thank you. Any public comments?
No.
Okay, thank you. No presentations, recognitions, or proclamations? All right, so we're moving on to reports, the city mayor report. I just wanted to mention tonight, we're looking at a noise ordinance. We have been listening to everyone out there who's asked that we look into developing a noise ordinance to make our environment better. Also, we have one town hall remaining that will be tomorrow at noon at the American Legion. All right, city attorney, you're up.
Mayor and council, I want to give a brief overview of some of the matters that I worked on for the city of Alpine this year. As you know, we went through extensive contract negotiations with TDS and successfully entered into a new long-term contract with TDS. We'll continue to operate under that contract. We've worked with them if we have issues with them. We worked on the city manager contract with Ms. Antrim and went back and forth on that and all approved that. The boards, commissions, and committee reviews, they've gone through various iterations with y'all. A lot of work done by Gio and Megan, thanks to them, but it I think it finally got done, which I wanted to do as a council, which is standardize things and try to use the boards and commissions that you wanted. There was some disagreement on that, but those things can be brought back before the council at a later date. We worked through the EMS service charge and the issue of trying to sort of all hands on deck trying to fix things when we had the death of the man who'd been running the EMS ambulance service for us with some cooperation with the county and the emergency services and the hospital district. All we worked through, came up with a new contract that appears to be working pretty well. I've considered the fact that I haven't heard any complaints, that that's probably good news. The Park Hill Smith and Cooper, we settled that long, long time, long-running problem on their performance on a city mapping project. Megan had a good idea and we've come up with a standard form of agreement for third-party contractors that the city wants to hire to do things, like in this case, it was to do trenching for water and sewer trenches or taps, so to speak. And so we use that, but let's use the same form for other people that the city might use for contracting. And we've also been working on a draft Alpine employee purchasing policy, so we can sort of standardize that and make sure we have protocols in place. So it's been my pleasure to help the city with all of these this year.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving on to the city manager report. Okay, sorry, my computer's a little slow, overworked today. And so I kind of wanted to give not only the council an update, but I also wanted to give the public and most of our lawn an update. Kind of our winter and the biggest thing we get a lot of conversation with is, you know, we are an isolated community. Our access to outside services is limited during storms. What's the procedure? How do we know what, who, when, where, why, who's going to help with what? So for the past few years, I've had the privilege of attending TechThoughts winter coordination meeting. As kind of the representative for Alpine, and these are invited with all the city officials, TechThought, it's also New Mexico, because this is hosted out of El Paso, they also include New Mexico as well. County officials, you have the Midland, Odessa, and El Paso National Weather Service. There's about four or 500 people, I swear, that get invited. Everything that they cover is from weather forecast and how they predict. Last year for 2022, they predicted a mild season. Out of the four predictions, they were right on with three of them. The only one they were not on was the snow. Now a bit more snow than they anticipated. 2021 was completely different at the beginning. They talked about the weather forecasting, the safety concerns, weather events, and tier priority and communication. The past two years, I've been real adamant about what do we do in an emergency? How do we ensure that we have that access, not only for Alpine, but for our region? We have residents who travel to Fort Stockton, we have residents who travel to Martha and Sanderson in this little area. If there is a national weather event, how do we ensure that they have those access? So I kind of, you know, do the cheerleader effect that we need more help down here. And every year, I know they're listening, because I can kind of see it in them doing things ahead of time. So they do this big presentation with all of the TechThought employees and the officials, the county officials. They provide us kind of an understanding of what TechThought is going to prepare. And I wanted to do a little presentation so that you guys are aware. I'm not going to go into all the slideshows, because they are available on the slide, on website. And they are in the packet. The important part of this is they do have an actual plan that they do follow. And I really mean all of our residents, employees, and council understand is they have it all tiered off. There's four tiers for our region. Tier one will always be the most important tier. Tier one includes the main I-10. The highway will always have the most accessibility than any other road. So a lot of times, if we have a winter storm, we do lose our TechThought employees who are located in our area, in our region, because they are required to go up to Interstate 10 to maintain that road. This past weekend, we had a snowstorm. It was lovely as fast as it came and left. But it's still a little unnerving, because you know, we do have ice that melts and, you know, are we prepared? Our TechThought crews for our area did an awesome job. And it was very noticeable when you went from a different area. Anyone traveled to Fort Stockton for Black Friday, or the next day would have noticed the difference. Our TechThought crews followed TechThought's plan and they pre-treated the roads. They are required to try to do it ahead of time, predicting maybe a storm, how does it, you know, work? Do we need to go out there and put dirt? Do we need to do, leave the word as Brian? I keep looking at some thought they, because he's our tech star, our expert over here. And they did that on our behalf in our area. So our roads were easier to travel. If you traveled Saturday and you hit the difference between when you're leaving Brewster and you're going into the next county, Pecos County. I get Pecos and Reeves mixed up every time. You could definitely tell the roads weren't treated. You could definitely tell the difference in how our TechThought got ahead of the game and treated them. The next section of pavement was a little bit worse. There was definite areas of ice. You could see where the snow wasn't melting because of the lack of treatment. So it made me feel really comfortable knowing that our TechThought is ahead of the game. So if we have these winter storms moving forward, and they have to be pulled out of our area, I know that our area will be covered. When it comes to the emergency side, they do work with us. Not only TechThought, it's also our own crews. Our guys are out there. We don't have all the resources. We want a snowplow. It's a little hard to ask for one when you're in West Texas and you may have a snowstorm that needs it once every 10 years. But if we had that emergency again, we'd be prepared. So our own crews work on it as well. They, so what they do is they have, they monitor the weather. They look at it, they kind of have a prediction, they pay attention. Midland, Odessa provides us weather notifications. I also get the one that is El Paso, because I swear between the two, we meet in the middle. El Paso will predict one way, and of course, Midland usually predicts another way. So I figure we balance it out in the middle with Alpine and Martha. Looking at that, TechThought has a whole process and program in place. They presented all of this to us at this meeting, as same as last year, but they've made some major upgrades. They have a whole new hero program and how they activate and how they move their employees and the priorities. It was really fascinating to listen to. They also look at the event and determine the severity of the location. How are they going to manage their crews within our region to get them to where they need to be? Is it something that they need to come out and do an instant treatment real fast, because they're going to have to go somewhere else? Is it something that, you know what, we're not going to need to worry about it for a while, we'll do it down the road? So during this whole process, they're working on it. And they look at it not only state or district-wide, but they also look at it statewide. So our TechThought employees don't just travel within our region, they also leave. So if we do have a statewide event, Hurricane Katrina was a prime example. Our own TechThought employees here in our region were moved to that area, to Houston, Corpus Christi, to assist with that. So it's understanding that we depend on them for our small little bubble, but the state depends on them for everything. This was the main part of this whole thing I wanted everyone to see. This is the tiers. There are four tiers that categorize our area, all the way from El Paso. And you'll notice it goes through Brewster County, Culberson, Jeff Davis, and Presidio. We are tier four. We are at the bottom of all the tiers. We are not the least important, as I tried to argue. But because of how they calculate the tiers and the travel and the usage of the roads and the locations, we aren't at that top. So it is a fight to want to be like, hey, we have an emergency, I want to know I can get someone in an ambulance and they can get out of here. But at the same time, they look at the region as a whole and they've made that determination. I thought it was really important for our council and for the public to see, when we have these winter events, TechThought is responsible for these state highways. So 118, Highway 90, Highway 67, I-10. They'll come in and do the best they can before they possibly get pulled out. That's why you'll hear on the radio, you know, the schools aren't opening until 10:00, or maybe we're going to be closed for a snow day. Because we know that once these main streets are taken care of, we still have all the side streets. And having the crew to be able to, to manage all of those extra without the resources. We don't want anyone in trouble. We don't want an accident. We don't want someone to get stuck. We want to leave them so that all of the emergency vehicles have access to them. We're not creating an additional issue. TechThought does a wonderful job trying to make sure that we, in our city and our surrounding area within our little bubble are taken care of. They pre-treat ahead of time, was very evident this past weekend. They've been out at 4:00 in the morning putting dirt down to make sure that we're covered. So I really wanted to have the public aware that as we get into the winter season, that everyone really does notice that we are doing a great job, not only with our city, but with TechThought, to ensure that that traffic flow is there. I was hoping Chris Weber or Anthony Marcus was going to be here tonight, but they have busy schedules too. So they weren't able to, but they did provide me some of the information. I really just wanted to get it out there as we get into the snow season, the winter season. If you're out there and you're wondering how the roads are treated, the highways will always be treated by TechThought. They manage those, and the city does the best they can with all the internal features. We do try to focus on some of the busier ones. So Ross is a busy one. Some of the ones on the south side, Gallego, I think names off the top of my head. They try to manage those with what resources they have. TechThought has helped us in the past with available material and, hey, you know what, we'll go ahead and we'll brine this street for you, because we know it's a heavy flow area. So we do have a great partnership with them. We aren't predicting a heavy winter season, but we don't want to take the chance. It is all a prediction. They do think it's going to be a warmer season than usual. They thought that in 21 as well. So we're, we're kind of talking that, picking it up and seeing how it lands. But I really just wanted everyone to be aware that that partnership we have with TechThought is important and that we do work together, especially during the winter season, to ensure that we have the availability for our residents to get around. Any question moment? And you can chime in anytime you want.
So the seat don't know no snow plows, no sanders, no nothing. You know, they got plows and sanders that go on pickups too, you know?
We do, and then they rigged a few things to help out. We learned really hard and fast in 21.
Well, you drive the truck and Mark hated it. I'll stay in the back.
We have done that too. You'll see our guys out there with salt.
Especially by the church that you'll be open.
They, they, they work really hard to try to address all the issues. Kirk is here and I am looking at him. Our police department's out there just as much. We really do try to take into consideration the safety with travel. It is really easy to get ice and just end up in your neighbor's yard. We don't want that to happen. But I did want the public and everyone to understand that we do have that partnership with TechThought. And they do help us. They go the extra mile and it's kind of my kudos to them and prepare us for this upcoming winter season. The other item, I don't actually have a slide presentation to go with it. I wanted to talk about it. One of the things that you and I have been working on as we present things to council, we kind of try to have a discussion, get an understanding, and then get the ordinance written, the policy written, and presented to council, public hearings and that. One of the things that's been brought up multiple occasions is the voluntary donation. So go through our utility billing. Darren Nance took a hold of that and he ran, for those of you who don't know, Darren Nance is our Parks Board Chair. And he got another city to like, not only like, hey, yeah, here's our ordinance, you can copy it, this is how it works, yeah, we had some negative feedback. Had a great conversation with the individual and then forwarded it to us. Loved it. We are going to make a few changes to it. I've told the mayor kind of repeatedly, we kind of utilize other cities' resources. We're not starting, you know, something new. Other cities have had this in place. The city did have this in place prior to me being here. There was just no documentation. How did it get approved? Who approved what? How did we choose? And when I talk about the voluntary donation, this is an additional fee that you would provide or you would pay through your water bill or your gas bill. And this would go to help a specific group. So when I sent out the original request with, hey, what are your thoughts? Of course, everyone's thoughts are, let's do them all. Kind of hard to do, because at the end of the day, one group would get five bucks and another group would get, you know, five bucks. So we threw out some suggestions and I got several feedback from a lot of the council members. And I kind of just wanted to have a little bit of a conversation, what we're going the direction. And one of the conversations was, is you know, we do currently provide funding for certain groups already. Do we want to stop providing the funding and have the utility bill donation? Or do we want to have the utility bill donation go to someone we don't already provide funding with? I thought that was a really important distinction. The other one, of course, is our parks. Parks was brought up several times. Should we have them with parks? The other ones that were brought up was, and the big one was our volunteer fire department. Having it where people can contribute to the volunteer fire department. Animal control, children's advocacy, we're all discussed. The concept that I thought was really interesting and I liked was, you know, not sticking to just any one or two, but dual rotating. And so based off of the ordinance that was provided, we would include a section that said council would approve by resolution those that are being designated. And then have it where, you know, maybe it's an annual resolution. One year, the first six months, it's for one group of entities, and then second six months, it's for another. So for the first six months, you have the option to donate to, say, the parks and fire department. In the next six months, it would switch. And then you would donate to animal control and family crisis. These would all be decided by council. The only thing that, you know, we kind of go back and forth with on logistics is having it set where residents can make the decision to donate, but they can't change it every two months. I want to donate this month, but I don't want to donate this month. That it would need to be a set length of time. Otherwise, the reporting side of it would be really hard. The billing side would also be hard, because you have to manually update accounts. So I kind of wanted to throw this all out there and have the information available. As I worked through the ordinance that was provided by Mr. Nance and making those changes, kind of wanted council to have that information to be aware. This isn't, you know, this is just some thoughts. We're going to throw it out there and see how you guys like it. We'll send out the first draft. You may get some more feedback from individuals in the public, and then we can make those changes. But I really wanted it on the agenda, just to have a little bit of an update of where we're at with it. I'm very appreciative of Darren Nance, who provided it, like literally, he's done with that item on your guys' list. So that we can start moving forward with it. Great input from all of the council, really appreciative. The only difference with what I'm moving forward with is so decimated mandatory, and you had to request it to not be on your bill. So we're not going to go that direction. We're going to make it a voluntary option right off the bat, not you have to come in and take it off. They did raise a lot of money right at the beginning. But we don't want to do that to our residents. We want them to have the opportunity to make the donation. The other side of it would be the amount. It would be a set amount approved by council. And then, like I said, would have a resolution tied to it, so that every year it could change. So that we're not doing it just one way, that you know what, maybe we have another nonprofit speak up and say, hey, we need a little bit of help. This is how we can help them. But there was a lot of input. We are working on it. Just letting you know the update of it, where we're at, all of your input was greatly appreciated. And so we're going to throw out some suggestions. It will be an information discussion item, so that if we need to readjust suggestions and how you guys want to go moving forward. But I wanted that out there for everyone to know.
Thank you. All right, any comments?
Thanks for doing it. Thanks to Darren for providing the information.
Yes, thank you. See you hiding back there. All right, moving on to public hearings. There's no city staff updates. So public hearings obtain citizen views and comments regarding a special use permit application for the purpose of allowing the applicant Sandstone Alpine LLC, DBA Antelope Lodge, to obtain an alcohol license permit from the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission to sell alcohol to hotel guests. The property in question is located at 2310 West Highway 90. The record property owner is Sandstone Alpine LLC. Is anyone here to speak on this? Okay, all right, come on up.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, here. I'm Chris Ruggia. I live in Ward 3. And I'd be in favor of anything we can do to help our hotels provide amenities to their guests. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this?
Hi. My name is Bobby Quintal and I'm on the phone. I just wanted to say hello and let you know myself along with a couple of other members of our team from Sandstone Hospitality Development, the owners of the Antelope Lodge are on the call. If anyone has any questions, but we're excited to hear any feedback from the public and answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. Okay, anyone have any questions? All right, moving on to public hearing number two. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding a short-term rental special use permit applications. Anyone here to speak on this? Yes, item number two, public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding a short-term rental special use permit application. Yes, yes. Would you like to come up to the podium and speak?
I never, I came to this meeting because I need to, you know, people are replying at a public.
Sure, no problem. Just come up to the podium, state your first and last name and the ward that you're from.
Yep, I'm off the top of my head, I'm sorry. I am a resident of Alpine.
Okay.
Ward 3. I'm in 3, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So your first and last name.
My name is Brianna. I go by Bree Adams. I am from Ward 3. I apologize, I have COVID last week and my breath was a bit short. Well, I do see a use for Airbnbs. I feel that in a town this small, there's a bit of an overabundance of them. They take up a lot of property that, for one, citizens of Alpine could use, and then people who are transient citizens of Alpine, such as students or employees, different things in the area could use, and more long-term rentals. They provide a lot of good income, and I understand that as a homeowner who has a tenant who does share my home on a more long-term basis. But I personally feel that, again, they are overdone as they take up a lot of that niche. I've been, they also are a lot of them in commercial zones of town, which while they would be considered commercial, and that's why you would need it for a residential area. A lot of, it creates an interest of the owners of those properties to not want businesses next to the rental businesses, because they're concerned it would lessen that business. And while I understand that from a business standpoint, I think it's detrimental to the overall commercial and quality of life in Alpine. I apologize for not being a very good public speaker. Is there any concern or question about what I said?
Any questions from Zans? Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this? Come on up, Darren.
Darren Nance, Ward 3. I guess the only thing I would actually mention is looking at short-term rentals, sometimes you can go in and look at the the value that's on the Brewster County Appraisal District for some of those, and you'll see a large delta as far as like, if you go to Airbnb and look at some of those properties, they'll be really, really nice inside. But you can look at the property value of the property, and the value may not be that high. So I was going to see, I mean, I'm all for short terminals and allowing those individuals to profit off of, you know, people coming in and providing income to the city. I think it would be nice to lower that delta of the the market value of the property and the taxable property of the value, if possible. So when STRs actually come up, you might just be, you know, more cognizant of the disparity there. Thank you.
Yes, come on back up, please.
I apologize, something I've been thinking about as well, because this has been a concern of mine for a while. A lot of the owners of the Airbnbs in town aren't residents of Alpine, and that sense, it doesn't really benefit Alpine at all, in the sense that the people who come to visit, though they may provide some amount of, you know, tourist output while they're here, that money just leaves Alpine. And in the meantime, that house sits empty instead of providing the required, which is a necessity, a home to someone who could be using it otherwise. And so I think that in that case, it's almost not serving Alpine at all. It's sending money completely out of town and not providing a home for the majority of the year.
Is there anyone else? All right, seeing that, we're going to move on to consent agenda. City secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda contains six items. Item one, approval of November 15, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the appointment of Andy Ramos, the Ward 4 position on the Parks and Recreation Board. Item three, approval of short-term rental special use permit applications. Item four, acceptance of the donation of a canine bulletproof vest to the Alpine Police Department. Item five, approve the effective start date for boards, commissions, and committees. Term limits to begin in October 2022, with current board members serving a partial term until May of 2023, when the city council When the city council will newly appoint board and commission members. Item six, approve the schedule for strategic planning priority workshops in January twenty twenty-three and February twenty twenty-three.
All right, I need a motion. Someone, okay. Any discussion? Oh, I need a second. And any discussion? Okay, CNN was moved to vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And passes unanimously, consent agenda. All right, no information or discussion items. So let's move on to action items. Action item number one, city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, I mean, sorry. Twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash oh one. An ordinance amending chapter eighteen, building and building regulations to the Alpine Code of Ordinances. A little brief background on this. And hiring of a building official, Andrew Devaney, one of his. Tasks when he was first hired was to start working on updating our ordinances. And we had the discussion that there was some things that were a little outdated. Some small grammatical errors. If you read the very first sentence, it says the city engineer. I've not known the city to ever have a city engineer on staff. So we updated that as well. Throughout the whole entire ordinance, he did update to reflect the current building requirements. He did also clean up what we were referring to as the gas. On section to make that a little bit more clear. He did put some guidance in there and then kind of explained why the different things to update. One of the other things you'll see redlined the most out of here is also the reference to all of the fees. What we have been doing is moving forward with all the ordinances and making the fees approved by resolution annually. So that every council has the opportunity to look at those, to address them and to adjust them as necessary. Without having to go through the whole ordinance process to do it. One of the big feedback you guys did receive throughout the first probably, I don't know, six months of the year was. You know, the permitting fee and the fencing fee and all these fees and you know, we need to change them and. It, it's sometimes just jumping through hoops to make a change. So those have been removed. So that those can be approved by resolution so that there can be the adjustment as needed. And there was some grammatical things that were cleaned up, some terminology as far as. Names of individuals instead of referencing like the finance director, it's the finance department. Clarification on city engineer, you have a building official. Our chief building official. It also does break down the twenty twenty-one international residential and building codes. We felt that that was important. To bring us up to date. So that those are all included. This is the first draft, so we do want to get your input.
So you said it no longer, there's no longer requires a permit for fencing?
There is a permit requirement. The fees would just be different.
Okay.
So instead of, I believe from, so we do have those, have it sent to you in rough draft version. And it would be a resolution after this passes removing them. By resolution to approve them, instead of it being by purse or foot. It would basically be like an application fee. I'm a little Andrew, I don't have that right in front of me.
Here we are. Yeah, specifically in regards to the fence, the reason we still want a fence permit is because we still have sight lines, your fifteen foot easements coming out to the. Section of intersections, make sure that's clear. We have, we're going to add an eight foot height requirement and we already know by ordinance. It's four foot high in the, in the front. So that's why we still want a permit, but instead of going a dollar linear foot, which could be. Astronomical depending on your property, it's just going to be a fifty dollar flat. Be no matter the length, we would still want to do our inspection out there to make sure everything else matches. But we wanted more cost effective for the customer rather than. If they price it out, come to us and realize it's going to be five, six hundred dollars, that's. You know, we don't want to penalize the citizens for doing the right thing.
Good, I agree.
And this does outline the permitting. A little bit more requirements as far as you do need a permit, because like you said. We want to make sure that the inspections happen and so that we know that the buildings are safe.
Correct. And saying, you know, different one on an alteration, used to was a dollar square or fifty five cents a square feet. Under root, so you want to do a bathroom remodel, so. You're going to have to pay fifty five cents a square foot on the total area under your roof that done. That's almost a thousand dollars on a two thousand square foot home, so. Now we're just adjusting it to where it would be just what you're doing. Instead of just going through like Megan said. Line item, seeing what needs to be changed, a lot more flat piece, carports and what, instead of sizing. And doing all the calculations, a lot of it would be flat piece.
We probably need to give a motion.
Yes.
We could talk about this all.
Okay, sure. All right, may I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero one. In ordinance amended chapter eighteen, building and building regulations to the city. To the Alpine Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, let's vote on it. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, this passes unanimously, action item number one. Action item number two, city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one two dash zero two. An ordinance amending the Alpine Code of Ordinances, amending chapter twenty-six. Civic and cultural affairs and facilities. Establishing article three, noise, adopting an ordinance providing for requirements and regulation concerning noise and its potential to become a public nuisance. A little background on this, this has been something that was in the works under a prior chief of police. And prior city management, kind of been a back and forth, some rough drafts have been. Put together, the public has been voicing their concerns with the noise on a regular basis. So Chief LaSoya and Chris Rujia got together. Chris also is our city contact for our music advisory board and so he took kind of a draft to them as well. And there are so many ways that a city can do a noise ordinance. They took a lot of research and information from other cities and kind of put together what they thought would work best for the city of Alpine. This is definitely a first. Because it may not work the best we think it is, but because we have nothing in place. Utilizing other cities to be able to come up with something is going to help. There are some regulations to it, there is some guidance to it. Some application to it, so you can't just randomly hire a band and decide to play in the middle of, you know, your neighborhood and bother your neighbors. There is also the decimal levels. The police department does have the ability to record the decimals. As we have the bigger music events, this is where it will be really important to test the ordinance to say, okay, this is what we've approved. Let's now. See if it really works, see the reality of it, look at how, you know, it affects our businesses, look at how it affects our residents, look at how it affects the events. I do want to point out and I do appreciate Counsel Johnson on page eleven. It says Gillespie County. Like I said, do use other statements for guidance. That section would have to be removed. So if you were to approve the first reading, I would like it to. To include the amending and not to include that section. Chris and Daryl really spent the majority of the time on it, going back and forth, discussing the benefits and that. The final meeting we had after, yes, to eighteen eighty-eight, that was kind of our, okay, we need something. We didn't necessarily get the noise complaints to the level we thought we would. We thought we would get a lot more. The biggest complaint was safety and parking. But we did get the complaints. Daryl has been providing me the noise complaints I get filed with the police department on a regular basis, so I do have a folder. So that we kind of see location of town, type of noise. We put this together, I should really give them both the credit, they put this together. We're hoping to really get to test it out as our friendly music events continue to grow. So we can see if the decimal levels will work properly.
Okay, all right, I need a motion.
I move that we approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero two. An ordinance amending Alpine Code for Ordinances, amending chapter twenty-six, civic and cultural affairs and facilities. Establishing article three, noise. Adopting an ordinance providing for requirements and regulation concerning noise and its potential to become a public nuisance.
Okay, thank you, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Well, I want to do an amendment to the ordinance. And this is that we delete item two B. On page eleven of the ordinance. My feelings are if we have. Noise issues from Gillespie County, which is Fredericksburg, they've got quite a band going on.
Okay, all right.
So you need a second on the amendment.
Yes, can I have a second? Second, all right. And then let's vote. For the amendment. Removing section two B. All right, let's vote on the main motion. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, the passage unanimously, action item number two. All right, moving on to action item number three, city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero three. An ordinance amending chapter two, administration, article six, records management, providing for a reasonable limit. On the amount of time to be spent. Without charge for vexatious public information requesters and requiring payment for the time and expenditures incurred beyond this limit. A little background information. Everyone is more than welcome to file a Texas public information request. We do have those kind of, I call them like robots. Where we get those requests that they're just constantly coming in for the same thing, they may change one word or one thing or they want twelve years and they want ten years and then they want eight years. Trying to kind of get what they want, they are considered time consuming. It does take a lot of staff's time to research and find. Then they're not happy with what they get and so it kind of becomes where it just real repetitive. It's the same thing over and over. They ask, you know, twenty different ways for one thing. Putting this into place will put a little extra burden on the staff because it will require that we have to keep track of all of the time. That we spend on every open records request. Some of them honestly may take a few minutes and some of them may take a few weeks depending on the size, the amount and the material being requested. The benefit to this is that it would put some boundaries in place. It would allow for when we have these requests coming in on a, on a regular basis that are just a little excessive. That we say, you know what, the city does have an ordinance, it is an ordinance that is allowed by the state of Texas. To kind of regulate that so it one, doesn't create the burden on our staff. But two, gives us a little bit of legroom to, to. To respond if necessary. So Geo did a lot of research on this and we felt that it was important because we've been getting more and more requests in. They're not always happy with the response, but this would at least give us, okay, you know, a little bit length of time and an understanding of our process.
I need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero three.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
On, on the guidelines, who determines that it's excessive and that it should be handled that way?
So that really would be our, that would be Geo.
So do we have like after five and six months or five requests in six months? Do we have any guidelines to?
The ordinance is written off with the state law, so essentially the, there are limits, it's fifteen hours per month. I believe at thirty-six hours per year. So what happens is we're going to track every single request, how much time it takes. And this is really a proactive measure because to be honest, we haven't gotten any with, meet the requirements of the ordinance so far, since I've been here. But it's, it's very possible and we're not able to implement those guidelines set by the state unless we have the ordinance establishing the policy. Now, we're going to track every single, the time that it takes on every single request. And if a certain specific request or reaches fifteen hours a month. Then that would trigger this policy. If, if they reach thirty-six hours in the whole count, in the whole fiscal year. That would also trigger the policy. And what this would do is it would allow us to. Charge the full amount to recoup the labor costs upfront before we continue to do any work. So currently we're only able to charge, you know, a certain amount. And collect that before we're able to, you know, we're not able to really go through and take. And advance the full.
It gives the city a legal tool to deal with people that are just really using the Texas Public Information Act to harass the city. The regular person that's just asking for regular information, it doesn't affect that at all.
Again, since I've been here, we've never had a request where we would have had to. Use these guidelines, it's just proactive in case we do get to a. Point where we're receiving vexatious requests, which usually are disruptive to city business and human resources and financial resources of the city.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. We have approved the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash oh three. An ordinance amending chapter two, administration, article four, records management. Moving on to action item number four, city manager.
Approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash oh one. A resolution appointing city council members to ex officio positions on city boards, commissions and committees. One of the things that through the boards and commission process. Was that each of the council members and mayor would serve on one of the committees or boards. Geo did reach out and kind of say, hey, what would you like to do? All of you did respond. And so now we're just making it an official so that we can get you in those meetings.
Any emotion?
I make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash oh one.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion?
Just for the record, so that the, the public will know who is on, can you read out who will be, which council member will be placed on which board?
Sure, I'll do it.
Thank you.
Council member Ward one, Judy Stokes is animal advisory board. Council member Ward two, Chris Rodriguez is on building and standards commission. Council member Ward three, Sarah Tandy is on the music advisory board. Council member Ward four, Martine Sandatte is on Parks and Recreation Board. Council member Ward five, Jerry Johnson will be on the Hotel Occupancy Tax Committee. Board or remain on that board rather, and Mayor Catherine Hayes will be on planning and zoning commission.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it passes unanimously, action item number four. Moving on to action item number five, city manager.
Approve resolution twenty that twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash oh two. A resolution establishing a policy for naming municipal property and streets. And this is, I guess you could say another proactive, we actually have had residents come in and say, hey, I'd like to rename my street or hey, how do we change your street name to dedicate it to someone? And the city does not have a formal process in place. The city has in the past by ordinance changed street names. Neville Hanes was done in two thousand nine. So. We've talked about it, Geo and myself, a few times. Geo took the initiative and actually reached out to other cities to get some feedback, how do they do it? And put together a little policy that can be posted on our city website. So that when we do have those residents who want to make a formal change and say, how do I do it? They have some guidance to do it. And this is not just street naming, but this is also for buildings that the city does own.
Okay. I need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash zero.
Okay, need a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, CNN, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, action item number five, passes unanimously. Moving on to action item number six, city manager.
Approve a special use permit application for the purpose of allowing the applicant Sandstone Alpine LLC. Doing business as analog lodge. To obtain an alcohol license permit from the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission to sell alcohol to hotel guests. The property in question is located at two three one zero West Highway ninety. The record property owner is Sandstone Alpine LLC. A little background on this, another item that we've been discussing that we, is going to trigger another ordinance update, a policy update. And the city of Alpine is required to approve a Texas alcohol beverage permit within thirty days. So it does limit our ability to get the process put to place before like finding and zoning. And then get it to council because we are on such a straight or strict timeframe. We are presenting this to council as a special use permit. That is how it has been historically done in the past. For those who are newer businesses requesting such amenities. And we would like to work on a stronger alcohol policy moving forward and how to address these types of things. But because of the. But because of the current they have filed, we do have the timeline, it is being brought straight to council as a special use permit.
Any emotion?
I make a motion, we approve this special use permit application for the purpose of allowing the applicant Sandstone Alpine LLC DBA and to obtain an alcohol license or permit.
I need a second.
Second.
Discussion?
Megan, can you tell me, will they be having like a club area where they'll be selling, or is it just selling for them to take to their room, or what, what is, what does this entail?
We have Bobby Kintel on the line that can answer those questions.
Okay. Bobby, are you there?
I am, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so thank you for the question. We have our central lobby in the middle of the property, that's where we'll be facilitating the sale of alcohol. The idea is that guests will be able to bring the alcohol to their rooms to consume or in the immediate vicinity behind the lobby where there's a small little area that's completely contained within the property. But we won't be opening up a club or anything like that, I think that was a question asked.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, thank you Bobby, alright, let's vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, passes unanimously, action item number six. Moving on to action item number seven, city manager.
Approved the award responsive to the request for proposal RFP twenty twenty-two dash eleven dash oh one to West Texas National Bank for bank depository and security clearance and safekeeping services. The city of Alpine has been with West Texas National Bank for over twenty years, they are the only ones who responded to the RFP request. It is publicized and it is on our city website for all depository institutions to apply. They are not making any significant changes to the current contract. It currently is in your packet with an unknown end date. State law does require that our contracts be renewed every five years, so the request will be for four years with one year possibly renewal based off of council. The one thing that they do indicate in their backup documentation is the thirty dollar insufficient check fee. And that goes both ways, it's one checks bound that are deposited by our customers. And there is the fee that we do pass back on to the individual. And then there is the fee applied to the city if we were to bounce one of our own checks. Since two thousand thirteen, that was a fear, I can guarantee that is not a fear now. We have money in our accounts. And they did respond in a timely manner and did provide all of the necessary requirements and documentation, a lot of the documentation requested is bank statements, which we don't obviously put out for the public to see only because of account information and stuff that we wouldn't want duplicated, it is a safety from my identity.
Alright, I need a motion.
I move that we approve the reaward responsive to the request for proposal RFP twenty twenty-two dash eleven dash zero one to West Texas National Bank for bank depository and security clearance and safekeeping services.
I need a second.
Second.
Discussion? Alright, see a none, let's vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, action item number seven, passes unanimously. Moving on to action item number eight, this is approve a letter of support to Trans Permian H two hub LLC in support of the establishment of a hydrogen hub in the Permian Basin area of Texas. Let me give you a little bit of background. Michael Looney, who's the vice president of economic.
We just made a motion.
Oh, okay.
I made a motion on the table.
Okay, okay, I was just giving background.
Oh, no problem, because the manager is not part of the county.
Special, alright, I need a motion, please.
I move that we approve a letter of support to Trans Permian H two hub LLC.
Alright, I need a second. Okay, no second? Alright, the motion is lost. Alright, moving on to city council member comments, council member Rodriguez.
Yes, I'd like to thank Ms. Gallo and Ms. Laboria for the canine bulletproof vest, that's very much appreciated. Our canine officer will be, will be very appreciative, and to wish all of you a merry Christmas, since this will be our only meeting in December.
Council members.
Same, happy holidays. I just want to thank Rod for what he's done this year for us, and Megan and Gio and the team that have taken Alpine in a very good direction for twenty twenty-two, it's soon to be twenty twenty-three. And to mimic Chris and Martine, happy holidays to all of you and may Santa Claus bring you what's on your Santa Claus wish list.
And I would like to echo that also, thank you guys for being here this evening, and thank you for everything you've done, your support. I appreciate council and our city attorney, and I wish everybody a happy holidays. Alright, so this brings us to action item number eleven, executive session pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas government code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting for any posted agenda item or to receive advice from the attorney as permitted by law. Tonight, the city council will recess into executive session pursuant to section five five one dot oh seven one consultation with attorney. May I get a motion and a second to recess into executive session? Okay, and a second, second, okay, I have a motion and a second to recess into executive session, any discussion? See a none, will we proceed to a vote? If you would like to vote in favor of the motion, please indicate this by raising your right hand. Okay, it's approved unanimously, the motion to recess into executive session passes unanimously. We are recessing into executive session at six twenty-seven P. Alright, thank you guys.
I make a motion we come out of executive session at seven fourteen.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we're coming out of executive session at seven fourteen.
No one was outside, but okay.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to item number twelve, action after executive session. May I please have a motion?
I make a motion, we take no action regarding the consultation with the city attorney, considering updates on legal.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, that passes unanimously.
So item number two, mayor, if I may, is approve a settlement for the West Texas Gas Operational Flow Order invoice. Just a little backup information for those who are still online and for those who may have questions. In February of 2021, the city was presented an invoice for $286,384.80 for extra fees caused by the winter storm of February 2021. We got that invoice in December, almost nine months later of '21. It was kind of been arguing it for a year. Had several discussions, got our city attorney involved to get some, you know, hey, let's work this out, let's negotiate it. Before council tonight is a proposal to settle this agreement at half the amount of $143,192.40 that we would pay over a three-year time period at equal payments. This would not be passed on to our residents. This would be coming out of what we call net position fund balance. Just so you guys have some feedback as well.
All right, I need a motion.
I make a motion that this $143,192.40 we pay, the city will pay this to WTG and three establishments. The first establishment installment shall be paid by the city to WTG before December 15, 2022 in the amount of $47,730.80. The second installment will be paid on before December the 15th, 2023 in the amount of $47,730.80. And the third and final installment shall be paid on before December the 15th, 2024 in the amount of $47,730.80.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to thank Rod, Megan, and everybody for all the time that they spent on this and trying to get the settlement. Good job.
Thank you. Amen to that.
Yes. Very good job. All right, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, the motion passes.
We all deserve a margarita.
Yes, we do. All right, so I move that we're going to adjourn. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. That was very good. Very good job, guys.